He's got to show us all up. He just is really good.
Look at him. I mean, he's like a top of the world there, babe.
That's right. There you go. Just don't let me fall.
Don't jump.
There's always a comedian amongst us. This is Rod.
These are planning commission meetings. We're going to lighten them up sometimes.
I don't blame you. We appreciate it for sure. All right, I want to call the Clay Township Planning Commission meeting to order. It is now 7:01. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I heard that, Whitey. I pledge allegiance to the playing back. And to the Republic.
Which is dance.
Whitey, roll call, please.
Chris Hilton.
Yeah.
Whitey Simon here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Borchardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Present.
You are?
Here.
Robert Muesling.
Used in the absent.
Absent, excused, yes, no?
Yes, yes.
And Keith Fell.
Same.
And Kathy A. Schweickert, the chair.
I am here.
No, Artie is here.
That's okay. We'll just keep going with it. Can't figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is approval amendments to agenda. Nearing none. We'll move on to item number five, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
And that was.
Tom Cozel.
Tom Cozel.
And me.
And Chris?
Yes.
Christine, yep.
Okay, Chris Hilton.
Yes.
Whitey Simon. Yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
And Kathy A. Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, Whitey. Item number six.
Madam Chair, excuse me, do you need a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moving a little too fast.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
A second.
All right, Harold. In that case, Chris Hilton.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling. Excused. Keith Fell, excused. And Kathy A. Schweickert?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for catching that, Sue.
Welcome.
Item number six is new business. We have two items under that. The first one is Stone Road Estate condos.
I need to unmute.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
Who am I unmuting?
Well, I'm going to take a guess. Monty?
Okay.
And you can ask him if there's anybody else we need to unmute.
John?
Self-channel.
John?
Monty?
Yes, I'm here.
Is there anybody else that's going to speak with you?
Um, I don't see. I thought Dan was here earlier. I'm not seeing him. Yes, he's on as well.
He turned into a carpet.
Dan's iPad, it says.
Let me find him.
Dan Cordis.
Down towards the bottom.
I just unmuted myself.
Oh, okay.
So do we need anybody else, Ms. John?
No. That should work for us.
All right. And as far as our planners, who's going to?
I will go over our review if you would like.
Sure, thank you.
All right, I'm going to provide an overview of our August 17th review letter. This is a site plan for a condominium subdivision located in property in the southeast corner of Stone Road and High Road. We've provided you with an updated number one in terms of other offices that have reviewed the proposal and kind of the status of that, just for your information. As I'm sure you're probably all aware, this particular area, High Road, is an unpaved gravel road for the majority of the east frontage of the site, the subject site, which is known as parcel A in the proposal. That's the area that's being developed. It's zoned RS1, which is rural suburban. There are wetlands in the area. I'm going to get to that in a second. The applicant has provided wetlands information as required. In fact, they've submitted a wetlands field assessment that stated July 28th, 2020. And it does show that there's multiple pockets of primarily non-regulated wetlands throughout the site that do not require a permit. The summary also states that there are potential wetlands in the northeast area, the development of the parcel that could possibly be offsite that would require an Eagle permit. But we, it appears that the substantial majority of the development areas is not impacted by regulated wetland. And as typical, we defer to the township engineer and approval of the wetlands field assessment. And whether or not the township would be requesting any further action from Eagle in terms of this particular issue. In terms of the proposal, the applicant is proposing a nine-unit detached and single-family residential site condominium development with, within a 17.24 acre area. We note that the condominium plan refers to the proposed units as lots. In general, we like to see those referred to as units because that's the official language of the condominium act. When essentially they're, the unit in this particular instance is being proposed to be what is the equivalent of a lot, but by definition, it's actually a condominium unit. And so, unit one would only have frontage on Stone Road. Unit two is a corner lot with frontage on both Stone and High Road. And unit 329 would have frontage on the south side of High Road. The site plan also indicates there's a parcel B and C. Just want to get some information on the, on the status of the creation of those parcels and if any modifications are being proposed at this time. It appears that this is all looking at the development of what is originally known as parcel A. In terms of the dimensional requirements, we have a table that goes over those. There are really not any major issues here. All ordinance requirements appear to be met. There are some things that'll need to be verified, probably at the time of individual plot plan permits for individual homes. We're looking to make sure that there's at least 25% landscape area per unit. So that's, that's one of the areas that typically, and we'll mention in a minute, the driveways and the trees also, which are, sometimes some of those final details get resolved when you see the individual plot plans and the final review. When, when lots are actually about to be constructed. When we look at vehicular access and circulation, ordinance standards appear to be generally met as it relates to that. Relationship to natural features, we provide an overview. They did not provide a tree survey. The revised site plan does indicate that there are tree preservation areas along the frontages and also notes heavy wooded areas to be preserved. If the applicant cannot indicate the trees four inches caliber or greater that are going to be removed, your ordinance basically can provide for a dotted outline, which would show the site improvement areas of each lot, including building, driveway, septic field, for example, with a note that no trees four inches caliber or greater will be removed outside of the outlined site improvement area. So this is a detail that we have not seen in the plans yet. So that's, that's an item that should be resolved. We do know that there's a clouded area on the plan that shows preservation of trees. One question we have is what mechanism is being proposed to preserve these trees in this area? Typically, these would be placed in either a general common element that is owned by all of the condominium unit owners in common. And has restriction of development, or it would be with a conservation easement, or could be even in both. So just a question for the applicant in terms of how that's being treated. There are no areas, oh, excuse me, there are also areas outside the clouded area that have a similar label that says heavily, heavy, heavily wooded areas to be preserved. So the question is, what's the specific plan for the preservation in those areas? So just once again, a question for the applicant. To what extent will four-inch or greater caliber trees be removed due to the grading and installation of site improvements? So, and in particular, we also, there's proposed to be rear yard drainage, which is pretty typical with a single-family development. What impact will the installation of the rear yard drainage have on the removal of trees as well? So that's just another question that we have that the applicant can address. In terms of infrastructure, once again, township engineer is usually looking at all of those details. So we'll, we defer to the township engineer on those. Landscaping, there's specific requirements in your subdivision standards that states you have to have street trees that are provided at one per lot and not less than one tree every 50 feet placed in the front yard area that's not encumbered by, by right of way. They are, they would typically need to provide 33 street trees based upon that standard. The site plan criteria table states that mature trees to be preserved along the frontage is necessary to meet frontage landscape requirements. So that might be a discussion item. They're showing these clouded areas as being preserved. Will in fact that meet the intent of that street tree landscaping requirement? So I think the applicant could probably address that and provide you with additional information, just to make sure you have a level of comfort that that's being addressed. Public walkways, the planning commission does have the option of requiring sidewalks in this area, public walkways. Does not appear that they are proposed. We defer to your judgment on this. The nearest school, Algonquin Elementary, is about one and a quarter mile away. And there are no other sidewalks really that they would connect to, to get there. So I guess that's the question in terms of whether or not you think it's appropriate. You can require them if you think they are, and you can just say it's fine as, as proposed, if you're comfortable with that. So we're recommending conditional approval of the site plan, subject to the conditions that we've noted, being addressed prior to final approval when the plan goes to the township board. And I'll be available to answer questions.
Thanks. Appreciate your presentation.
Go ahead.
Ask Rod a question, or actually I have several, but we'll move on from that. Do you have ditches along Stone and the other road? Us. Ditches with culverts or just plain ditches?
I don't think there's existing culverts there that I'm aware of. I think the applicant could probably address that. I think it's just ditches at the moment.
There will be culverts.
But there will be, right? As part of, because when the driveways go in, you put culverts in.
Yeah.
Culvert for the driveway?
Correct. Okay.
Okay, I was going to now turn it over to the applicant or the applicant's representative, which is probably Mr. Monty. So if you would like to address any of the points that were raised or any other further information you want us to know.
Sure, I'll start. As, as always, Rod and Eric, you did a very thorough review. You guys are very complete. Just as far as the status of parcels, you questioned parcels B and C, the split. We did just receive. I think we just submitted all of that to the township at this point. We finally received DTEs. Approval. We had to provide them with an easement in order to do it. So all those documents have just been turned into the township. We, we understand that these should be referred to as units rather than lots. We'll definitely make the change. As far as the wetlands concerned, the, Dan had hired a professional wetland, environmental consultant to review the site even prior to him purchasing it. So, you know, as you can imagine nowadays with wetlands, you want to even determine that before you buy a site to see if you can even do anything. And it turns out that there are very minor regulated wetlands, as you mentioned, to one corner of the site, and we've tried to avoid those completely. We'll provide the 25% verification landscape area. I think that's going to be very, very easy to do. These are large lots. You know, the homes are small in relation to this, you know, the site. There'll be a lot of lawn area, landscape area in trees. So we can certainly provide a calculation based on what we're anticipating right now, but we'll easily meet that requirement. The trees, trees are, this is a kind of a issue that I guess we need to talk about a little bit. The, these sites are heavily wooded. If anybody has drove by here, you probably can't even see into the site. It's so heavily wooded with trees. So our goal here, our goal here is to actually only remove the trees that we need to, to construct the homes. And brush the area, for example, in the front yards and remove what's necessary for the septic fields, the drainage in the houses. The concept would be to preserve as much as we can. So we're confident when it came to providing the, you know, your landscape requirement, that's one tree every 50 feet, basically, the 33 trees, we're going to have way more than that. And I know at this stage, there was no formal tree survey done to validate that. But we can go out and provide more information along the frontage, short of doing an entire tree survey, which really isn't required by your ordinance. But I do know we can certainly meet the landscape requirement, and that's why we provided that note on the drawing. The, the ordinance actually doesn't have a replacement requirement either. So there's, it kind of indicates that if we're going to save some trees, that we can show it, dot it, you know, dot them in an outline. And this is where I'm a little bit puzzled. Our concept here is we want to be able to sell these lots or units to individuals and allow them kind of to do what they want on these lots. Other than if we have an area that is absolutely required to be preserved. So, I mean, part of the attraction to these lots is that they are wooded lots. We can certainly identify the frontage as being preserved in the areas that we have so that we can comply with the landscape requirements and make sure that those, those remain. We have no intention of clearing this. It would be a massive undertaking to begin with, and we really don't want to. I think the, the benefit here is the fact that they are wooded lots already. So our goal is really just do minimal tree removal, just necessary to construct the project. Guarantee the preservation along the frontage. That, that would be the ideal situation for us and to verify in fact that we do meet your frontage tree landscape requirement, which I think we'll very easily be able to do. I didn't get any of the other department head comments, so I'm not sure. I don't have anything to address as far as those are concerned. The, you know, method of how we would preserve trees, here again, I think the goal in this is to not limit every individual parcel owner when they buy these to not be able to remove the trees. I, I don't think it's the intent of the condominium set up here to, to restrict that. Certainly not desired, but I don't think it was intent to restrict that, Dan, unless you have something else to say about the trees that I'm missing.
No, you're, you're right on with, you know, people, people are looking for wooded property today, and we don't want to incur the cost of taking trees down that people want anyway. So our intent is to keep them as wooded as possible and only clear the home sites, septic sites, driveways, and the ditch area and the area that needs to be piped for the, the rear yard drainage. Those are the only areas that we really want to go in and cut trees down in.
How far away are you going to clear from each unit?
Around each house, Mark.
Right.
Um, I don't, we have.
Yeah, approximately.
I don't know. You have something on the plan there, don't you, John?
Um, not around the houses. I didn't show that, Dan. We showed the whole, certainly the whole backyard where you cross the drain. Our rear yard drainage is acting as a detention area as well. We have to provide stormwater detention for each of these. And so beyond that, we don't anticipate touching anything. I mean, that is just going to remain as is, pretty much 100%. Around, around these houses, I would suspect, you know, the septic field areas, probably right to the side lot lines adjacent to the house and maybe 30 feet behind them.
My only concern was if the, if you leave trees too close to the home, then the homeowners' policies are going to skyrocket. So, you know, speaking from another.
And people usually want them cleared a little further away from the home. They want, they don't want trees hanging over the house and leaves falling into the gutters. You know, and they want backyards, a little bit of cleared backyards, but a lot of that's going to be brush and selective cutting.
Okay.
Is there anything I missed that you would like addressed?
Uh, you have natural gas coming in there or not?
I think there already is natural gas there. If there's not, that we definitely will, will run natural gas down there. I mean, that's a big selling point. You can't, nobody wants a house with propane anymore. So if gas is not.
You got that right.
Oh, it's on Stone Road.
Yeah.
If it's not down high, we will put it down high because we won't sell a house. Nobody will buy a house with propane.
Okay.
I had one with propane. It's expensive.
I did too, and I don't ever want another one.
Me too.
I noticed, I, I, I'm, I'm not thinking no sidewalks here because it wouldn't go with the rest of the, the area. I mean, that's what I'm looking at, is no sidewalks here.
There's no sidewalks on Stone, and that's a busy road.
I built the house in Clinton Township, and they made me put sidewalks, and it was the only house in the street that had sidewalks, and it looked dumb. So I, I, I don't see the reason why we'd even mention sidewalks around here.
Yeah, it would take away from the natural rural element.
Yeah.
Area, for sure.
Well, it would be a sidewalk going to nowhere.
Right. That's what happened to me, and I don't want to see it happen here.
Yeah. All, all we need is a bridge.
We need a more disconnected sidewalk.
Yes.
The, the traffic area on Stone Road and not so much about the other one, but in, what is that, 10, when I see that, 16 foot wide on, on Stone Road? Is that what I saw?
Mark, I'm sorry. What are you asking on?
Stone Road. How wide is that? I'm looking at traffic, traffic patterns, although it's only going to be, what, probably 18 cars at the moment? Yeah.
No, a little more than that.
Yeah, Stone Road's pretty busy.
Yeah.
10 daily trips per household.
All right. One other thing with the wetlands and the way the, I don't see a wetland, I see an elevation, but I don't see the wetlands as it goes through each of the units, the property in the back. One thing we'd have to, as far as the building permits are concerned for accessory buildings, is take that into consideration when we assign a permit. Certainly don't want to put an accessory building over a wetland area.
According to, Mark, according to Stu Kogi from GEI, we don't have any regulated wetlands on that property.
Oh, perfect.
Even in the back.
Yeah, I read that from GEI.
Yeah, there, any wetlands that are on there are very, very small pockets, and they're, everything is non-regulated.
Perfect.
Any other planning commission members have any questions? If Mark doesn't have any more, or if you do, go right ahead.
I'm good.
Will these, will this preserved areas be perpetual forever?
And for food duty?
We, we can, on the condominium master deed documents, we can identify the preservation of trees in a fashion that will meet your landscaping requirements, certainly along the frontage. But it wouldn't be our intention to limit each lot owner to, that they could not remove a tree in their backyard. So we would not plan to identify it, that it always be preserved.
How about beyond that ditch line you have there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
You have that ditch going in the back behind the houses, right?
Yes, that, that ditch is going to be in an easement.
Right.
That will be part of a stormwater detention area that absolutely.
I'm thinking beyond that, past that.
The clouded area that's, you've got the cloud around it.
Correct. I'm, we're just trying to show that all of this area, we, we have no intention of clearing anything back there, other than what's necessary to construct that ditch within the easement. And allow us a little bit of room to maintain it. That's about it.
Just, just realize, because I've seen this happen before, the downside is if you don't put something in to preserve that area, you will have that one homeowner that shows up and decides to clear everything, every single tree off the property, and all the other homeowners will be up in arms because all those trees are gone. Because I've seen it, I've seen it done before. It's just some people come in and they ate trees, and every single tree on their lot is gone.
Well, you're having, this is a detached condo subdivision, right? Are you going to have a homeowners association for this subdivision?
You have to have, you have to have a condominium.
You have to have it. Well, couldn't you write that in the homeowners association, that you'd have to get approval from the homeowners association and then go to the city?
I don't think that's strong enough.
I would just say no.
I'd say no.
Unless, unless it was an emergency of some sort.
Maybe, you know, I, I don't know how to answer the question fully. Maybe there's a way that we can award something in these areas that no full clear cutting is permitted. Dan, I don't know if you, do you have an answer to that?
You know, I could work to that, but I, I would agree with putting something in our HOA documents about clear cutting, but I don't know what, I don't know what. Yeah.
Maybe.
You're, you're selling somebody a two and a half acre lot, and that's kind of the.
Right, I get that.
Kind of the, the, the draw of why somebody's going to want to go out there. And I don't know if it's, if it's fair to say that they can't go on their back one acre and do anything. You know, I agree with clear, with not allowing clear cutting. I mean, but if somebody wants to go out back in there and, you know, cut a trail to walk around on.
Yeah, that's a little different. I would expect that. I would expect trails, but.
Right.
All bar.
Well, someone may want to plant a garden.
Or somebody might want to plant a garden, right. And there's a million things that people might want to do back there.
And somebody might want to sell the house, and somebody else comes in there and wants to clear cut.
Correct.
Yeah, but if somebody owns that lot, how do you? You know, maybe they might want to plant corn.
Do you have any suggestion? Because I, I would, that was one of my concerns, when you just said you have nine lots, and then all of a sudden, one person decides I'm going to take every tree down.
Yep.
And there's, there's a number of options. One is you could, you could structure it where there would be no clear cutting within a certain boundary from the side and rear yard line, kind of like the setback areas, the required setback areas. You would have to maintain those as, as clear. The safest thing is, and what I've seen in other subdivisions, actually designated as a general common element and put in, and put a conservation easement or, or condominium documents that specify that only selective clearing can occur with that, within those areas, and that. only selective clearing can occur with that, within those areas and that trees of a certain caliber um, are, are size are preserved, which means you can go in and clear out brush, you can do all kinds of things, put trails in, all the things you might want to do in an area like that, but the larger trees stay preserved unless they're sick, um, or, you know, damaged or need to happen. Uh, so, but those are, those are certainly different options is to, is to try to maintain a uh, a, a tree buffer around the edges, the side yards and the rear yards. Um, as, as, so at least you get some protection from, uh, if, if your neighbor happens to clear all the trees out, you've got a little bit of of room there. Uh, but really the safest thing is just to protect the entire area, even if it means pushing back the the edge of it a little deeper, um, uh, from where it's shown on the plan, so that you've got an area that that you know would always be preserved. I mean, that would, that would certainly be the best option.
I, I guess, I guess I, I, I want to be a little bit careful. I don't want, I don't want to be, uh, having so many regulations on these things that I can't solve these. I, you know, I, I'm in this to solve it and I, I don't want to have so many regulations. I mean, somebody can go across the street and, and buy two acres from me and, and clear cut it. Um. You know, I, I don't want to be sitting there with a million regulations hanging over my head that are going to chase people away. Um.
Actually, these are pretty popular like this.
Yeah, right. Uh, and, and I think the people that we're going to get are going to be um, are going to be good homeowners.
What did we do on Folker Road? We uh, that strip between Folker and the trailer park in the back there. Where they can't develop in there, remember that? Can I go back so far? Cause of the-
I think a piece of that, a portion of that was wetlands.
Yes.
Right.
And-
Wasn't going to be touched anyway.
But we didn't identify, I don't think we, there was any other tree requirement that was put in the documents.
So what's the square footage of the homes?
Um, I, I don't know what the, I don't know, I don't remember offhand what R S minimum square footage is.
Okay. Did I read two story, right?
No, we're going to have ranches out there.
Just ranches, okay.
No, not just, I mean, we're, we're probably going to have ranches and two stories.
Okay, all right. Well, my concern with that is, uh, not really a concern, but what if somebody would put an addition on and they had to go back and and remove some, uh, trees, that, you know, that's, you know, that's possible, it could happen and couldn't, shouldn't be a restriction against that. Just a comment.
Yeah, we could run into the same thing with someone wanting an accessory building too.
Right.
Yeah. It's where it's hard to define the actual location. I think we're all on the same page. I just wish we could come up with a solid answer, you know?
Right, cause your lot sizes are different and people may want to clear the one acre parcel, the two, you know, and then you got the one and a half, one point two acres, and you got two point three eight acres. I mean, you're looking at different parcels, so.
Again, as always, one size is not going to fit all.
Right, it's not, and, and, you know, I want to save this tree as much as the next guy, but you know, like you said, uh, some of the restrictions can get overwhelming.
Although some of the clearing can get to be just as bad.
Right, well, I've seen cleared lots. I, I see what people do.
But again, there are no guarantees that, that, uh, building as it is, uh, the, the lot as it is being bought that's going to stay there for ever.
Right.
And you, you want to at least allow, uh, a seller to be able to sell the house, even if somebody's going to cut down three or five trees in the backyard or in the front yard or whatever, yeah, well, maybe not the front yard. Uh, but, uh, uh, a- again, everything in rear, the whole drainage ditch ought to be preserved.
Agreed.
Well, I understand that, but I'm looking at unit two, okay, future resident unit two, these are on septic fields.
Yes.
It's going to go on the size of the septic field, like I'm putting up a fifteen hundred square foot house, my septic field's thirty-two by thirty-two. That's a pretty big septic, pretty, now it's not that big, but I got another house, I got to put a hundred and two foot by a hundred and two foot septic in. So, I mean, eh, the septics are going to, it's going to take up a lot of the space too, so, I mean-
Yeah.
Of course.
And that's the health department, that's the perking and everything else.
You don't want no trees around the septic field because the trees always inch their way right into the field and kill the field. But you, you got to look at that too. So, I mean, I understand saving trees, but I don't want to cut down any trees, it's too much work.
I get the theory that these lots are wooded and people are going to be looking at it and the developers thinking that that's why people are buying it, and I suppose, I suppose buyer beware also, it's a condominium development, probably check in what you can and cannot do, and if your neighbor can clear cut everything. Guess you need to know that, or vice versa, you can't do it, but we have a lot of valid, you know, concerns, we need a different septic in a different area. We don't want to restrict them that much, but, again, one size doesn't fit all, so I'm not exactly sure. I agree with saving as much trees and everything else, I'm just not sure we want to limit the developer to that degree. I just don't know.
But as you, as you propel, propose a building, depending on the number of bedrooms that you propose, you also are required to have a certain septic system in there, and the builder should by now know uh, what size buildings he's putting up and what size of a septic system he needs to satisfy the requirements. So, he should know right now what he can and cannot clear around the house.
We, we know, we know that. We've had the health department out-
Exactly.
And, and we do know that, that all those sites have perked. And we don't have an issue with that. I don't understand what the issue is that we're talking about, about the septic fields. We've had the health department out there.
I had no issue with the septic field. I was just trying to tell you that you should know by now how many trees you have to take out, down before you can build the house. Including for the septic system so that it is free of roots, uh, closing off your field. I mean, you understand what you have to do. I think.
Well, certainly, I think, um, we've got general sizes shown on here for the septic fields already. Because, uh, as Dan said, the health department's already been out and checked it out. We're not certain, we're showing a generic house size because it could be, you know, that's obviously variable. Um, I guess really as, wh- what we're just trying to say is it's not our intent to tear trees down, but we just don't want to limit a homeowner completely. We can do it along the frontage and, and certainly specify a requirement there. I don't think your ordinance has a requirement on tree preservation. Um, unless I missed something. Uh, I know it's, does say we're supposed to identify what we plan to save. But-
Is there a possibility the township could add like an incentive to this where maybe the preserved areas aren't taxable?
Hmm.
If they were to clear cut the whole area?
I don't think that'll work.
And generally, that doesn't, the, the value is in the development on the property, the development's already there, so. Um.
Sorry, guys, I had the wrong print. I'm looking, now I see the septic fields.
Yeah, they're on, uh-
I had the wrong one.
High Road.
Yeah.
So, High Road side.
I had the one that just showed the house.
Yeah. So, as, I have a comment, uh, so as far as the tree removal is concerned, after the properties are sold and the homeowners move in and they find that they need to remove one or two trees or whatever the case may be for uh, view and/or, uh, because the tree have become diseased and dying, uh, could be a simple thing as obtaining a permit uh, through the whole, either the homeowners association or through, uh, the building department. And look at that tree and decide yes or no, and that would be a no cost permit. Of course, it'd be a fine if they didn't get it.
Well.
You know?
I think at this point, you're, you're probably, if, if that's the way you want to go, we're probably going to have to look at some ordinance amendments eventually to address that. I don't think we're going to be able to deal with this project. Um, but that could be something that could be explored.
Yeah, well, uh, the way it sits now, I'm, I'm fine with the way, way it is as far as the tree and the preservation that we currently have in place. Myself.
I like it. On, now that I'm looking at the right, yeah, setup, yeah, I'll go with this.
I don't know what happened.
I'm going to ask the two Chris's if they have any questions or comments, since you've been pretty quiet on this topic at the moment. Don't want to leave anybody out here.
No, I don't have anything. I like the way it's proposed.
Okay, how about Chris?
Nope, you got all my questions answered, thank you.
Any other planning commission member questions, comments?
You know, could I try and state a motion?
Support.
Keep it, keep in mind it's a recommendation.
Yeah, well, yes.
Thank you, Ray.
Recommend to the township conditionally to approve site plan for eighty-seven seventy-seven Stone Road. Parcel seven fourteen oh thirty-three four oh oh six dash zero zero zero. Provided verification of the twenty-five percent requirements for units one, three are provided. A tree survey is submitted, the preservation of trees in clouded areas provided, same through for the outside and ex- explain in part the impact on the rear yard drainage system.
Support.
On that, Mark?
Thinking.
Yes.
Yeah.
But, did you support?
I support.
Does this include the, uh, site plan review notes from August seventeenth?
Yes, that's what basically I quoted, actually.
And no sidewalks?
No sidewalks.
Hmm, they were not provided and we did not specify.
I don't think we need them.
No, great. Where would you put them?
Oh, we can find a place.
The sun doesn't shine there either.
You'd be taking out more trees to put them in.
Right.
I, now that you've heard the proposed motion, any other comments?
I just want to clarify one thing, there's, you're really, I, I want to make sure you're not suggesting they have to provide a tree survey, right?
That's what I was-
No, 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 uh, thi- this is basically what, uh, was this, uh, suggested in the review.
Well, we just mentioned that they did not provide it, so it's not required by the ordinance, so I just wanted to make sure you're not-
Well, we don't need it.
Okay.
I was going to say, cause your motion originally said provide a survey and I don't think that's what-
Did I say that?
Yes.
Yes. So can we, poor Sue, where are you, Sue? Um, can you restate the motion that was just made, so we're all clear on what we're voting on, please? Where'd she go?
He's muted.
Oh, she is.
She muted herself.
I did not get the whole motion, I have to review my tape.
Okay, Whitey, can you give it a try a little slower and state the motion again, please?
Remove, uh, recommend, conditionally approve site plan for eight seven 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 Stone Road. Parcel seven one four zero three three four zero six dash zero zero zero. Provided the verification of the twenty-five percent requirement for units one and three are provided. Uh, the preservation of trees in the clouded area shall be indicated, which is also true for the outside area of that, uh, proposal, and explain the impact of the rear yard drainage system on the surrounding area.
Now, sidewalks, just to be very clear.
Do we have to put that in because there are no site?
Just put it in, just so-
We just to be clear.
All right, uh, and no sidewalks to be permitted, uh, to be provided.
And, by that, well, let me make sure. Yeah, I, I, one, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this too. In terms of the preservation areas to be indicated, I'm assuming that that would be similar to what your ordinance says, where if they were to show an area roughly around the house, that could be the area that is approximate in terms of what would be cleared. Um, that would satisfy that, is that like a bubble area around each, each building? As an approximate area of what is being cleared for the, for the, and, and around the septic tank. Would that satisfy? I just want to make sure they understand what they need to do.
I, I hope so. We saw the septic tanks and we know what you have to do about those.
So, so if they, if they did that little bubble around the house, around the septic area, and then also around where the rear yard drainage is, to show what they're going to clear, to put all of that in, then that would tell you what their intent is in terms of clearing trees.
I think that's a good idea.
That's, that's, okay.
Both bubbles of clearing areas.
On the house.
Bubbles around the construction areas, right? The areas where there'll be site improvements or structures being constructed, showing that where the limits of, of clearing will take place.
And the second area was?
The, the structures, the septic tanks, the, in any site improvements, including driveways-
And site improvements.
Driveways and drainage areas.
John, do you have something to say?
No.
Nope.
I'm good, thanks.
Sure. Sue, did you get the motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, Whitey made the motion, who seconded it?
Mark.
Uh, Mark did.
Okay. If any of the planning commission members don't understand what the motion is as it may, please say so now. Hearing nothing, I will call for a roll call, please.
Okay, now I got to get my site plan thing out here. Keith Fell excused. Chris H- Chris Hiltonan.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Chris Hol- Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borschard.
Yes.
Tom Cosell.
Yes.
Robert Excuse and Kathy Schweickert.
Yes.
Excuse me, Kathy, can I ask a question, uh, just to clarify?
Too late.
Well, where we go from here, since it's a conditional approval, um, I'm assuming it goes to the township board next. Do we make these modifications and send them to Rod and, and Eric to review, or how do, how do you do it next? Or is it, there's a final site plan here? I don't remember. Is there a final condominium plan?
Right, I'm going to defer.
I really say, well, I just, through the chair, I just would, I, I would suggest that they be cleaned up before they go to the township board because the next level of review would really be engineering drawings.
Right, okay.
That was going to be my suggestion, so they know what they're doing, so. Any other questions? John, any other questions? Are you all set?
We're good, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, we appreciate your, uh-
Thanks, John.
Thank you for your, uh, presentation there.
Thank you, Mr. Portis.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we're done with item A, so I'm going to move on to item six B, which is nineteen hundred South Channel. And-
I'll be presenting this one.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Sure.
And I believe we probably have Mike Smith needs to be in on this.
Yep.
Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Fabro are unmuted now.
Where's Mike? Is he here?
Yep, right here.
Okay. Um, I, go ahead, Eric, make the presentation then.
Sure, so this is consideration to set a public hearing. Uh, the site is on the north side of South Channel Drive, east of Schnickenberger Road on Harson's Island. It's zoned R one and surrounded by R one.
The site is a fifty-foot wide by three hundred and forty-foot deep lot that's bisected by South Channel Drive. A house, garage, driveway and septic field are indicated on the plot plan. And it appears that the garage in question was existing at the time the plot plan was submitted for the house. Proposed improvements to the existing garage include extending the foundation six feet off the west side. To accommodate a building addition and stairwell for a proposed second floor accessory dwelling unit. Review item five notes that vertical dimension, dimensions should be added to the elevations to indicate building heights. Additionally, the required yard setbacks should be added to the plot plan that includes the addition. Zoning ordinance section three point zero one provides the general standards that apply to all accessory buildings, and we note in item nine. That setbacks and easements and the proposed rear yard lot coverage should be added to the plot plan to verify compliance. On page five of the review, we note that the site is considered a non-conforming lot of record. As it is older and does not meet the current R1 zoning requirements. We note that this section permits new accessory buildings subject to zoning requirements, specifically setbacks being met. Section twenty twenty-five provides the accessory building standards that are specific to accessory dwelling units. And we note that the planning commission has discretion to determine that the proposal will not adversely affect the single family character of the neighborhood. And we include dwelling design standards on page five that could be used as guidance. And subsection D, we note that the applicant should provide written verification that at least one owner of record would occupy either the house. Or accessory unit and meet the requirements for principal residence tax exemption as required. And verification of this should occur prior to any public hearing occurring. Item E notes that the applicant should verify the proposed connections of public utilities. Also documentation regarding the adequacy of the septic system should be submitted, though this could. Occur as part of the building permit and verified at that time. Item H notes that the plot plan should be revised to include one additional parking space for the unit as required. And lastly, item fifteen provides three specific standards for accessory units that apply in this case. First is verifying the maximum building height of twenty feet. Second is verifying that the apartment would not exceed thirty-five percent of the total floor area of the existing house and apartment combined. And third is revising the floor plan to not exceed six hundred and fifty square feet of usable area for the unit. And this could be accomplished by excluding the area of the stairwell. That is all I have, as this is the first consideration of the request by the planning commission. Public hearing will need to be scheduled as required for this use. And I'll add that the applicant submitted revised plans and documents to the township today, I believe. We did not review those, they addressed some of our comments in the review, but we would need to re-review. The entire proposal and update the review letter prior to the next meeting.
Thank you, Eric. I'm, I'm gonna call on the applicant and/or their applicants and/or their representative, if you would like to address. Any of the concerns and comments from the review.
Yeah, I just, I mean, what is, what else does he need, because Cindy got everything. She got the, the print with all the, the heights on it, and she was forwarding it to everybody.
Alright, so one example is your elevations show an overall height of twenty-two feet. We, we don't calculate that height that way, that way, so we'll need to see the mean. Building height of twenty feet to the midpoint of the pitched roof, so. Some revisions will be needed and you can't. The public hearing is required, so you can't seek approval tonight anyway, so there's still some time to. Update the review and, and address some items on the plans. Another item is like on the plot plan, there's just a note about utilities, public gas and water. It'd be ideal to have, you know, where those lines actually are on the site.
They're at the house, and we're gonna take them back to, you know.
Right, so showing that on the plan would be additional information the planning commission could have, they're just minor details mostly. The big, the big items are those three accessory apartment. Things I noted, the twenty, making sure that the, the average height is twenty feet.
I don't hear that good, so like, will this be written and I can pick it up from Cindy? On what I need to make changes on?
Yeah, we'll update our review letter with what you submitted. In the next week or so, and then you'll get a copy of that, so you'll have time to update the plans again prior to the public hearing.
So I'll have to do this all over again?
Well, this isn't, this isn't the public hearing, yeah, there's a public hearing required, the township has to send a notice. To surrounding property owners and advertise this request, so.
So like, I mean, well, I re-have to pay, I mean, I paid nine hundred for this, do I gotta pay another nine hundred to go to a public hearing?
No, this is part of your application.
Did you hear that, it's part of the application? Mike, did you receive the August thirteenth from Gilfels Lobster special land use review, did you get that?
Me?
Yes.
I've been working with Cindy on this, and she's been filling me with everything I get, everything I need, but.
Because the reason I asked that question is, there's an August thirteen twenty twenty. Review of your application by the planners, and it's, how many pages long is this? Seven pages, and addresses what pretty much Eric just said in his presentation. So if you haven't seen it, you're probably at a disadvantage.
Would they email it to me, or?
I believe Cindy would have done that. I didn't let out, I asked her that question, but it's usually the process, Rod, do you have any input, or do you?
We sent it about two weeks ago by email.
I can barely hear you, Eric, can you say that again?
Sent it about two weeks ago by email.
I still can't hear you, Eric.
He sent it about two weeks ago by email.
Okay, heard it, heard Rod.
Yeah.
I know there was some confusion, there was something with even us getting our packets, so I would have to verify with Cindy, which I can't do right now, that. It was sent to the applicant and/or. Mike Smith, who's preferred construction. But that's why I'm asking.
Think someone got the applicant, someone got our comments, because some of the items were addressed. Either completely or partly, we just didn't update the review letter.
This is Roger Fabro speaking, I know, I did not receive anything, can I be added to the distribution list?
That is taken care of through the building department, and you, what's today? And say, you can call Cindy in the morning and ask her personally, if you like, either you and or Mike. From preferred construction, what she did, if you prefer that, or I can contact them.
Well, I just wanted to get a copy of the course assignment, so I understand.
Sure, sure, I get it.
So Mike, it sounds to me like now we have to go and address these last items. I guess the, the three are the most important, and then come back for board approval. And is that meeting already scheduled, or do we come to you and schedule that?
We have to, for to the point. Is that Eric talking, go ahead.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I was gonna say, we have to schedule this for a public hearing with notifications and the timelines, which. I don't have my calendar in front of me, what's the date of our next meeting, September? Can anybody help me here?
September twenty-third.
Okay, thank you, Rod, I apologize, I should have had my calendar here, um. So at this point.
Sorry, just to the applicant, so the way the planning commission typically works is they.
Hey, curious.
Okay, Eric, I'm gonna stop you. You, you were doing really great when you made your presentation, and now I can barely hear.
Hey, your volume dropped for some reason.
I don't know what happened, because you were doing great during the presentation.
Why do you? We just have to turn our hearing aids up. I do not need a hearing aid, thank you, sir.
Why? Hey, Rod, can you help if?
What is, what is your question, yes, I was trying to hold?
I think Erica was gonna explain to the applicant the process, if, I think that's what he was trying to do, I'm not sure. Unless Eric can.
Yeah, well, what happens is, if, assuming you set the public hearings for the September twenty-third meeting, then a notice goes in the paper, and. Notice goes to everyone within three hundred feet. And the, the hearing will be held, and then the item will be considered. At that meeting by the planning commission for potential action, could be approval, or could be tabled, and could be denied, or whatever the planning commission chooses to do. But that is the, that would be the, the action that, and that's the process. That process, you're not being delayed any, that process was gonna happen, that, tonight is the night the hearing gets set. And assuming the hearing gets set next month, and the, the process is, is not changing in terms of timeframe. It's, you're still on the same timeframe.
Okay, and so then, Mike said he's been going to Cindy for directions and updates. Should we be going to Eric directly?
No, you go through Cindy.
Okay.
And Cindy's done a great job, she's helped me out, but, I mean, I thought this was the, because the. Meeting that was gonna answer all the questions, but.
Well, there's, somebody must have read something, because there was some response to the review. So we have some more answers, but I would suggest you reach out to Cindy tomorrow, make sure you have. The email or however you're receiving your information as far as the review, and then. We have to decide tonight if we're gonna set up for a public hearing for next month, so. I'm going to go back to the planning commission members and say, any questions, thoughts?
Well, I, I have a question that I don't think I heard answered, and that is. What does the original? Foundation of the garage look like? It probably is not a full. Foundation that's required for the house.
Yeah, it's got a full footing, I dug on the side of it.
Okay, I think that was one of the questions, did you answer that then in your response to Cindy in this latest?
No, I'm, I don't believe Cindy ever asked me that, but, I mean. I mean, I can talk to her, I can talk to her tomorrow.
Yeah, I thought it was in the review that Eric provided to us, I don't know, that was the question I had. And I don't know, is the garage actually angled and not parallel to the side lot line?
Yeah, it's got a, it's like, it's like the plot plan, it's got a little angle to it.
Okay. Thank you.
I said, can I? Septic and, and water, is there gonna be some sort of irrigation that the septic is sufficient to hold the extra?
Yes, Lowell, Tom Kaufman and Lowell from the health department, I've already met there, and we're gonna put in a pump and bore a line up to the front.
Okay, and that septic system can support the additional?
Yes, yeah, Lowell measured it out, and. I mean, I can get a written thing from the health department if you'd like.
I'm sure. We probably should have that for the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that implies you will have a, another tank there, I, I presume.
I think it looks like, it sounds like he's gonna pump from, from back, or the grinder pump or something up to the existing tank.
Yep.
So you'll have a lift pump somewhere in between?
Yep.
And getting back to the foundation on the garage, you said you did some calculations on that, and you did your measurements, you probably want to have that data as well?
Yep.
Kind of what? You said you dumped down for the footing?
Yep.
Right.
Do you mind if I ask, what was the, what was the footing?
What was the footing? It was about thirty-nine inches.
Really? Do you say thirty-nine or forty-nine? Thirty-nine.
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 Close. It's good enough.
Any other board members, questions, comments? Pretty quiet.
Well, I, I think it was asked that they provide the additional parking spot that's required, and purportedly. The septic system is large enough with a pump. I, I've driven past it a number of times, I do it every Sunday when I go to church. And it, it seems to be tightly packed in the back there, but then again, you've got all the room in front to. Have a sufficiently large septic system. And the only thing that I would like to see is a statement that a owner is occupying. One part of those two dwellings, since I believe it is not a homestead, listed as a homestead right now.
You guys should have got a letter from the homeowner that Cindy received.
We didn't get that.
Okay.
Whitey was, Whitey was in the pack and I dropped off for you.
Oh, I didn't see it in there.
It was attached, I just, I just picked it up today, sorry, it was in there. During the process of selling their home.
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, can I ask a question, what is this extra parking spot?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
What, what is the extra parking spot?
Required because you have two dwellings, I believe, is what Eric indicated in his review.
Can you hear me now, Kathy, Kathy, is that better?
Barely.
A little better, yeah.
Okay, so you just need to indicate one parking space, it can be on the driveway.
There you go.
Can be a paved area. Yeah. In front of the garage, it's just showing that on the plot plan. It's a specific requirement of the ADU standard, so it's just to verify that.
Okay.
How many parking spots do we need?
Just one.
I mean, no, I mean, right now, he's got a two-car garage with a slab out in front for parking, and a three-hundred-foot driveway, do we gotta add to that?
It can be shown on the, on the driveway space in front of the garage.
Okay.
So any plan, a plan note is fine, or a, or.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be striped or anything like that, just to show that you have it.
Okay.
So I have a question on the use of the new structure. The, I did read where you said it's for the enjoyment of the homeowner to go and exercise and/or whatever. Would you ever have any plans in the future to do a rental unit?
Never.
Never.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it shows here it is twenty-four by thirty, but Eric said it, anything more than six hundred and fifty square feet, and I'm still showing the twenty-four by thirty on my prints.
So that's just the unit itself, so the, the interior rooms.
Oh, okay.
I thought, I thought CR, I thought he made the storage bigger upstairs to get to the square footage at what he needed to be.
Yeah, we haven't looked at the revised floor plan yet, but you could exclude the stairwell and the storage areas and likely get to that six fifty or under.
Right.
And I think it might be a little more helpful when you see in writing the review that they did for tonight's meeting, because all of what Eric just. Pretty much said is contained in that review.
Yeah.
So again, I would say, reach out to Cindy tomorrow, for sure. Okay?
And Mike, let me know if you want me to meet you there tomorrow. We can talk later.
What was that?
I just said, let me know if you want me to meet you there tomorrow sometime.
Okay.
So planning commission members, any thoughts? Suggestions?
I, I guess my only response would be if we could get the revised packet a couple of days before the public hearing. So that we could look at it. That would be nice.
Well, I, as a side note, I did talk with Cindy today, we are gonna go back to the theory of. Hackers will be ready to be picked up at the township office, if it's not possible for you to get there, they will be left to the police department. I think we're giving up on the mailing, if anything, so.
Thank you.
I, I was amazed that actually Cindy did her job, because the postage meter indicated that it was stamped on the fourteenth.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna even go down that road, we're just gonna try to move forward on it, but at this particular point, if I'm correct, Eric, we're looking for a motion, or?
Set up a public hearing.
To set up a public hearing, yes.
For a date.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to schedule. A public hearing on JPC twenty twenty zero zero four for nineteen hundred South Channel. Parcel number seven four one four seven nine three zero. Personal number seven four one four seven nine three zero 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 seven, DS zero 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 R one for our next meeting of September twenty-third. I think that allows us enough time for notice.
Eric has had it correct?
We'll verify with Cindy. It's dependent on the newspaper's cutoff, but that's typically enough time.
Okay.
I'll second.
Who seconded?
Chris.
Yes.
So it's Christine and Chris?
Correct.
Very good.
I think.
Can I?
We have to spell one the K.
Hold on one second. Who was, somebody want to ask a question? I don't know who that was.
Yeah, this is Roger just asking a question. Just to clarify the height issue or the question. It's, it's gotta be no more than twenty feet in height. And I forget how you described that, Eric.
Sure. It's the mean of the pitch of your gabled roof. So it's not the peak as you show it now. It's the midpoint.
Oh, I see.
So you'll likely meet it, but it should just be shown that way to verify.
Okay.
And that's in the, that's in the definitions of building height in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to, thank you, Eric, for answering the question. We're going to go back to our motion that we now have. Christine made the motion and Chris seconded it, correct? And it's to set a public hearing for September twenty-third, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I should have specified for the special approval land use.
Probably. Sure.
Instead of just all the numbers.
Yeah, well. We tried.
I'll amend that motion for approval, um, to set the public hearing for special approval land use as previously stated with the rest of my motion.
Thank you.
Uh, hmm. I noticed on the paperwork, they did not, uh, check that off. Neither special land use or site plan consideration.
I'm not sure which paperwork you're looking at, but.
The one from the township, uh, clay township application.
Well, that's what we're doing, so.
It's special land use.
Yeah. There we go.
Yeah.
So that's our motion. All planning commission members, if you, if someone does not understand the motion, please say so now. Otherwise I hear nothing. Sue, I hope you got that motion and, um, Whitey, could you please do a roll call?
Chris Hilton.
Yes.
Whitey, yes. Christine?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy, did I miss anybody?
Ask, no, I don't think so. Did you miss anybody? I think we're all set, so it will be scheduled for the public hearing for September twenty-third.
Is that going to be another one of these zoomers?
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that one yet. I'm, I'm working on, I'm working on that question. Don't have an answer.
No, no problem.
Um, and our planners, Eric, you'll take care of all the notifications that need to be taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't think we need to do anything more with this then. Thank you to the applicant and Mike for showing up. And I'd say reach out to Cindy tomorrow in the building department, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have a good night.
All right, I'm going to continue on with our planning mission agenda. We're going to go to item number seven and finish business, which item A is waterfront fences, community, and harrisons.
Oh boy, where's my copy of that?
Okay. Turn it back over to the planners because we have a memorandum, big one.
It is. Um, thank you. Uh, as requested, we've gone through and put together ordinance language. Um, I'm being joined here by Sri Kamara Gary, who's from our office who helped me with this. So I want to introduce you to her. And you've seen her, I think, on some of the meetings before, but, uh, she's been, uh, working with me on this ordinance. So I just wanted you to see her and say hello.
Okay.
So, um, I, I don't want to, I, I, we've gone through a lot on this, so I don't want to go into a lot of detail. What I want to do is focus on the ordinance language. And then if you have questions about some of this other information, we can certainly go over it. But you have two versions of a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. And really the key difference between them is just the approval process, whether or not it requires special land use approval or whether it would be done, uh, as a principal permitted use with just a site plan. Uh, so, uh, then the first thing that, that we're proposing here is to add a new definition for decorative fence. Uh, just to clarify what that is and it's pretty broad in terms of, of what it allows, but it's very clear that it does not allow a chain link fence.
Thank you.
All right. So that's, that's, that's probably the most important thing. Um, and then when you get into the actual regulations for waterfront lots, um, you're going to find that there's even more regulations about the opacity of that fence. But we're defining it at this point, and then we're also defining a waterfront lot, meaning a lot that abuts Lake St. Clair or a boat of a waterway because you, you have that term in other areas of your ordinance. So that then becomes a waterfront lot. Um, there's a minor tweak to the unobstructed yard space definition that really just has to be done just to reflect the way it's being used. I think it's just, it was just an oversight that this wasn't stricken in the past. But it, for the purpose of this ordinance, an unobstructed, uh, yard space shall mean the required yard space abutting a boat of a waterway that is void of all buildings and the like. So we've gone over that whole required yard space. I think you have a pretty good understanding of what that is. So when we get into the unobstructed yard space section, three point two nine, we're re-titling it to say unobstructed yard space and waterfront lots, just because I think if you were to just look at the ordinance and see unobstructed yard space, you would have no idea that that applies to waterfront lots unless you read it in detail. So it just makes it a little easier, I think, to find it and to describe what it's actually doing. And so we're taking out the section that talks about the building inspector improving these fences because obviously we're changing the way that would work for these. And then decorative fence is not exceeding four feet in height may be permitted in these required, uh, yards that are, that are abutting boatable waterways, subject to the following. So you have to have a decorative fence. So that's been defined. Um, and it's very clear what that is. You've got it in the definition. There's some additional information here indicating you can't have barbed wire spikes or the like. Then fence opacity, you already have some regulations in your fence ordinance, but we're making it very clear here that all decorative fences in the unobstructed yard space shall be no more than twenty-five percent opaque or obscure. So what that means is you have to have seventy-five percent you can see through of that fence area and only twenty-five percent of it can be opaque or obstructing. So that makes for a fence that, um, is more open and creates open views, uh, to look through. Um, exceptions for non-residential uses. So the planning commission may make the following exceptions for non-residential uses that abut residential use is subject to special land use requirements listed below. And that would be allowing a class two B thermally fused and bonded vinyl chain link fence and to allow fences up to eight feet in height. So this is just when the case where you have a non-residential use and there may be a need for something more significant in terms of the fence. You have the option of potentially allowing that as a special land use. It's not by right. It's not given. And then we get into the approval process. The approval process states that any fence that's proposed in an unobstructed yard space is going to require special land use approval under this version number one. And then you would review it in terms of its relationship to the spirit and ten of the zoning ordinance, the master plan policies and the potential impact on the abutting properties and the neighborhood in general. And then fences in other yards, um, that do not abut, uh, residential uses shall be approved as regulated in three point oh eight. So that just goes through the normal process. Um, so just to make that clear. So in approving a special land use, the planning commission can impose reasonable conditions if it finds they're necessary to improve the, approve the proposed fence and ensure that it will be, uh, compatible with and not have a material negative impact on adjacent and surrounding properties. And then you, you have current regulations to say nothing in this section can prevent the ZBA from granting variances as stated, and then nothing can prevent the averaging of the established rear lot line. That's already in your ordinance. And then the next two sections actually go into the general fence section, one dealing with residential fence and one dealing with non-residential fence. Because remember we talked about altering the grade? And it seems like that really should apply to all fences so that you, you can't artificially in, increase the grade of the property by more than twelve inches where you're putting the fence. So, because right now you could say, okay, I can put in a four-foot fence, but then someone could like build up a, a mound that's four feet high and put the fence on top of that. That's not what you want. So this is making it clear, and this applies to any fence because really you don't want people building up areas for fences anyway to try to get extra height up. So this would limit it to a maximum of twelve inches above the established grade of the property. And, um, of course, that would be subject to review of, of drainage issues anyway. Someone's going to have to take a look at that. So assuming that can be done and not negatively affect drainage, you could potentially do that. And then all public and private easements shall be identified on the permit drawings. Um, we think that's important as well so that when any fence is being reviewed, regardless of whether it comes to you or if it's being reviewed by the building inspector, um, that they can see where those easements are. So it's very clear that, um, there's not going to be an issue encroaching on an easement that shouldn't be encroached upon. And then fences in waterfront yards are subject to three point two nine. Just letting everybody know that if you go to the general fence requirement and you don't know about the waterfront lots in the unobstructed yard space, you're going to get a reference to it here and just making sure that, uh, that's there. So all that same language goes into both the residential fence and the non-residential fence section. And then, because the version two, like I said, the only real difference is all, all the language is the same until you get to, um, three point two nine D approval requirements. And it just says that it requires, if you're in an unobstructed yard space, you go to the planning commission to approve a site plan. And so everything's done through the, through the site plan approval process rather than going through the special land use approval process. So, um, that, I know we've talked a lot about this, but that's a summary of what we think you were suggesting that we bring back to you based on our previous discussions. And you can let us know if we're right or if you are looking for some other tweaks. Um, in the event that you're pleased with this, then the next step would be to decide between version one and two and set a public hearing, um, just like we do with other zoning ordinance amendments.
Thank you, Rod. Appreciate it. Planning commission members, questions, comments?
I have a question, um, on easements, on utilities with fencing on, uh, whether it's in front yard or backyard or waterfront property. Is that strictly the, uh, building, uh, permit, uh, issue or is it something that we can fold into uh, this, uh, new ordinance as well?
This would, this, as proposed, this would require that all public and private easements be identified in the permit drawings for any fence in any location.
Okay.
Regardless of where it is.
Okay.
Perfect. Question. Would that imply to be a private easement when the gas company, instead of running my gas line from the street, went across one property and brought the gas line between the C wall and my house and everybody else's house too? Would that be considered a private easement?
Um, if, if it, a public easement is one that's generally by a governmental entity.
Right.
Um, private easements are typically held by private companies. That's probably the easiest way to make, but both of them need to be shown. Uh, the, the way it reads, all public and private easements need to be identified. And typically those get recorded and that's how they become identified. If they're not recorded, people aren't going to know about them. So it requires someone to actually search and make sure they know you searched the title and, and find that out.
Right. Because when you grant an easement, it's, yeah, like you said, it has to be recorded and, and because, and you've given the property away basically.
Certain rights to the property.
Certain rights to the property.
You mean the gas company can come in front of my property on the C wall and start digging?
Yes. Uh, yeah, they probably can. If, uh, under certain circumstances, yes, if there is maintenance or repair, uh, that has to take place, then they likely can. It depends on how the easement is written, but.
Well, we never wrote an easement. It was just that the neighbors all decided, uh, to get the gas line run across there in order to make the, uh, cut from the supply to the houses shorter. But, uh, I don't recall, uh, signing away an easement. Uh, anyhow, that was just an aside.
You call Ms. Diggin, they're, they're going to mark it and they're going to say it's an assumed easement.
Well, yeah, no, I, I mean, I don't mind. I just wanted to know whether that would be considered a private easement.
If it's recorded and it's, then it's going to show up. If it's not recorded, it's not going to show up.
So I can show, uh, I can check to see whether it's recorded.
Yes.
I never thought about it until you just mentioned it.
Call the assessors department. They'll hook you up with, uh, St. Clair County. If you don't have their website, I'll give it to you. I'm on it almost every other day.
That'd be nice.
Hey, planning commission members, any thoughts? We have two versions. Do we need some more input? What are we thinking?
I just had a question. I didn't know if, if the original, uh, issues or complaints that some of the residents have were, were that fence that was allowed or that any fence was allowed. Because it's, it seemed to me that when, when the residents were discussing, I, and I, I think Mr. Burgess is on, but I don't know if, um, if it was the type of fence. I mean, I know really the only thing this would do would eliminate, uh, chain link fence in a waterfront setting. I mean, I know there's a couple of other things that need to be cleaned up and I think those make good sense, but I don't know if, if that's going to satisfy what the, what the residents that were, were originally complaining about are looking for.
Well, it, one answer to that is that if you go the special land use route, it becomes a discretionary decision, which means it's not, uh, a, a, a nondiscretionary decision means that if you meet all the ordinance requirements, you have to approve it. So if a site plan comes into you, for example, and it meets all the ordinance standards, you are bound to approve it even if you don't like it. Um, whereas with a special land use, if you make it a special land use, then you have some criteria here, including compatibility with um, surrounding, um, neighbor, the neighborhood and, and, uh, the, the, the general conditions around it. And if you find that that fence does not meet those standards, then, um, potentially you would be in a position where you could not approve, uh, the fence if you go to the special land use route. Um, yes, the other option would be to write it that they're banned in unobstructed yards and you have no fencing at all. Um, so that is another option. We don't have that in here. Uh, you could just take it away altogether. Uh, keeping in mind that, um, it could be challenging in terms of where do you want the fence? Because you, you know, the limit, you have limitations on what goes in the front yard. And if someone wants to, to fence an animal, um, how's that all going to work if you can't do it in the rear yard and you have extreme limitations in the front yard too? So, uh, just something to think about, but it, it's, uh, some, some communities do ban fences along the waterfront.
Would, um, I think we discussed this once before as well, and that was the, uh, setbacks. If we comply with the, uh, you know, forty-foot setback or twenty-five-foot setback, can't, can't build a fence past that. That makes sense.
You'd still be allowed a fence in that forty foot. That's just forty foot unobstructed. So it would have to be the decorative fence in that area. You could still.
Four feet high, right.
All the way to the waterfront. Correct?
Correct.
Well, I'm saying not going to the waterfront. I'm just saying you can't build anything or you can't put a fence past, uh, in, in that setback area. If it's whether, you know.
If it's unobstructed.
If it's in, if it's in that unobstructed yard area, you can put a fence in there as long as it's four feet, no more than four feet high and it's unobstructed, which means it has that opacity limited to twenty-five percent obstruction. Um, once you set back greater than that amount, so if you, you know, like we had that little drawing and we saw that's in there. If you're in the non-required rear yard, you can have a chain link fence there because that's not in the unobstructed yard area and that can be six feet tall.
That would make it interesting on that drawing that we have, that sketch.
Yes.
Very interesting.
Hmm. So if somebody wanted to put a little dog run with the chain, six-foot-high chain link fence and they had extra, they say they had an extra ten feet of setback beyond what the minimum requirement is in the rear yard. So they've got a, um, a non-required rear yard that's ten feet deep. They could put a six-foot chain link fence in that area and, and, and run it, but it just wouldn't extend into the unobstructed yard area.
Right. It could not.
It could not.
So what ramifications would that bring up? Meaning all property isn't the same. Meaning all property isn't the same, but.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, I think the way I would look at it is someone could build a building addition that goes all the way to the edge of that area. You've got your setback and whatever that is, if it's a fence there, if you're upset about the fact there's a six-foot-high chain link fence, well, someone could tear that down and put a bedroom right there that's two stories tall. And then it would obstruct it even more. So I, you know, you're probably better off having a fence in that location than having a structure.
Make sure your neighbor doesn't sell the house.
Exactly.
Any more questions, comments, planning commission members?
Well, something like that almost makes me think that we should have special land use section that we have seen here.
Version two.
Yeah, actually, it's version one is a special.
So on, on special land use, that would call, that would call for a public hearing, right?
That's right, and everyone within 300 feet would get a notice.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm with you, Whitey.
That's version one.
Are you with me?
That's a version one, because I got confused. Yeah, it's version one.
Okay, just so we're clear. So what the planning commission members.
I was still looking at Rod.
I'm sorry, were you asking me a question?
Yeah, I would say, what do you think, young man? How?
Thank you for calling me a young man.
How does that relate to some of the ones that we have in that nice little old comparison chart?
Well, there's, there is a fairly wide variation
I know.
of, of what's there. And I think, I think it reasonably compares as being probably not as permissive and not the most restrictive. I think it's, I, 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 if you're concerned about it, I think it allows you for, to have some
Control.
discretion.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and I think that is probably something that, based on what I'm hearing, you, I think you would appreciate having in order to at least have a say on what happens here and maybe influence what happens in, in those sensitive locations.
And the neighbors too.
And the neighbors would be happy to be able to tell you what they feel.
So that we can at least take it into consideration.
Absolutely.
Better what version we go with. We got to have a public hearing.
That's right, and then you'll, you can always change it, modify it.
Thank you.
At the hearing.
At the hearing, absolutely. So you're not, this isn't your final say.
It still gives us an opportunity for the public, whether it's version one or two, for the public to chime in and, you know, give us more input of what they think about. Hello there. He's going to help you out, Mark?
I need help.
Ask him what version.
Okay. So.
So that, so that, if that's, if you prefer version one, then the motion would be to set a public hearing for the next regularly scheduled meeting for version one.
Same goes for version two, so it sounds like.
Or version two if you prefer that.
Right, so sounds like we're looking if anybody's interested in making a motion? Or not? Or if you want more discussion, I mean, I guess I'm to the point thinking that maybe we need a public hearing just to see what the public's going to tell us.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. And if they don't like that, we can always come back with a public hearing for version two.
We could come back with a lot of different variations.
Exactly.
This will not be our first go around.
Just for clarification, Rod, the, the main difference would be with, with version one, we'd have public hearings for the fences. Version two, no public.
No public hearing, no public notice. It's just a site plan would come to you.
Version one would allow the neighbors to sort of give their opinions.
Right, they would be notified and then they could give you, otherwise they're not going to get notified. They'd never know what's happening. If you did version two.
Alright.
Can I then move to set a public hearing regarding zoning issue discussion, fence standards for waterfront resident lots, version one, for 9:23, did we say?
Yes.
Who seconded?
Christine.
Me, Whitey.
Christine, thank you.
Well, sad, any discussion? I assume everybody understands we're setting up for a public hearing for, well, that's a motion, I should say, is for September 23rd, which would make it two public hearings on that date, so.
We'll get a good crowd.
It couldn't be too bad.
We will see. So, alright, Whitey, roll call, please. We have a motion, we have support. Roll call.
Roll call.
I said discussion. I didn't hear any discussion. Sorry. I'm sorry, I thought I did. Okay, how about discussion? We'll start with that. Hearing nobody saying anything, how about a roll call, please?
Chris Hiltonen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Olcom. Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Kathy Schlecker.
Yes. Thank you. And planners will take care of the notifications and all that is normal, so. Alright, item 7B says master plan.
Can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
We don't have anything for you to review, just a quick update. We distribute, township board authorized distributing the plan as we brought up at the last meeting to surrounding communities and road agencies and other agencies. So that was mailed out last week, so that puts you on target still for October hearing consideration to stay on that 63-day timeline that, that those other agencies are allowed to have in order to, to review it. So just wanted to let you know that, that's still on schedule. And we'll still be getting you hard copies to review as requested. We're making a couple tweaks still, so didn't want to send that out quite yet, but that should be on the next week or two.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Item number eight is planning consultant report.
We did send out the, did you get the copy of our most recent newsletter in your email?
I did.
Okay, good. We did that. I just wanted to share that with you. That's just a second part to the one we had last time. And we have a few just updates on some projects we're working on. And I think one of the interesting things I wanted to point out is that the Michigan Sign Guidebook is being updated. I'm on an advisory committee working on that. It's a very extensive manual. And since there's been some changes in case law, it's a good time to refresh it. So there's a large group working to get that up to date, and hopefully that'll be available by the end of the year. So just wanted to give you a brief update on, on that, and hope you enjoyed the newsletter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item number nine is ZBA representatives' report.
Oh, yeah, we had some good action. We had one on 7842 Stark. The guy had, the lot was too small. He's going to build a new house on it. And it barely fit, you know, township minimum of 1,085 or 65, so they granted him the approval because of the lot size. And then at 775, Lake Drive, they were talking about a town, a house that burned down, and they were supposed to tear the garage down, but then it was on the dangerous building list. So they ended up, the people bought the property and said it was grandfathered in, so they tried to rebuild the place without permits or anything, so they need to get permits for that. And then another one, they were building one shed, they were going to build one shed, but they had two on the property. And so they just decided to tear down two and build one. But the other thing was, they kept bringing up the Airbnb ordinances that we were having and we were talking about, because I guess they got a lot of problems with Airbnb on Lake Drive and Stark. I didn't know that. And they never brought anything up about it. And why, they also brought up another part of the problem is our zoning ordinance books aren't updated regularly, because I went to the zoning ordinance on one of the, the cases, and nobody's book matched. Brian's book didn't match, Gary and Brian's book matched, but they're, none of them matched to our books of the ordinance. So I, we need to talk about updating the ordinance books.
So we sent Cindy the updated ordinance today from the outdoor storage and the boat houses. We sent both the full PDF and then just the insert pages. So if there's a lot of conflicts, you may just want to have everyone on the ZBA reprint there. The PDF that was just sent to Cindy, or maybe she can do that for you and put that together, but.
I didn't know you just sent, I didn't know you sent an updated one to, to her. She didn't mention nothing to me about it, because I asked her before.
She just got, it was just this afternoon, so.
Okay, well, I'll talk to her tomorrow, and I'll make sure everybody in the ZBA is on the same page. Because you look kind of stupid. Everybody's looking at the different books, and nobody's book matched. So, I mean, it wasn't. It wasn't. So that's ZBA. Over and out.
Thank you, Harold. Appreciate the information. Item number 10 is board representatives' report.
Everybody received in their package, the, was a heading, was Michigan Community Association Law Blog, but it does address what Brian was talking about. If you don't have it, then there's no point in going over it, because there's a multi-page document.
I haven't.
Is that the new ordinance, 144?
Yeah, yeah, with Airbnb.
I tried, I looked that up on the, on the internet, and it's a pretty interesting ordinance.
Yeah, that's something that we may want to discuss in the near future here.
Yes.
So.
Wait, can we make a point, second? Which ordinance? Are you talking about the blog, or are you talking about?
Well, it'd be about the Airbnb and the rentals, basically. I, I know we addressed this pretty heavily before, but apparently there's some issues going around the community about it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Too long to do it, so.
Mark, are you referring to the, the Community Association Law Blog that cited all the recent case law that came out?
Uh, no.
No, I, I got a whole bunch of pages, as you indicated.
This is all about Lake, Lake, Lake.
Right.
You know, the latest one here was August, August the 6th. Somebody sent something in to Artie. So.
Yeah, and they brought that up with the ZBA meeting too.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Any other report from you, Mark, on anything, or no?
Nope, nothing to report, planning commission, so.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Item number 11 is chairperson's report. I want everybody to maybe think about next month's meeting. There is a possibility we could do people in the meeting and then still zoom other people in. So we need to think about that, and especially with public hearings coming up, how we're going to handle that. So one way or the other, probably through Cindy, you're going to reach out and maybe a week or so and see what everybody's thoughts are, okay? With that aspect of it. I believe in our packet, we're in receipt of, I'm going to call it, the Michigan Community Association Blog, homeowners community association. I have probably another 10 pages of things that started maybe in January of this year, addressed to Artie concerning, I'm going to call it dangerous non-conformity sheds, condemned homes. Most of them are referring to short-term rentals, which we've had discussion somewhat before. So I am, I believe those are in our packets. We do have those. So. I'm going to move on, and that's really all I have. I'm going to move on to item number 12, which is planning commission members' comments.
May I ask our trustee, who was in Sunday's meeting? And it was presented that they were going to, that we had asked them to distribute our master plan. Were you as confused as I was when the discussion started that they didn't know what was going on? The board.
Well, hopefully I straightened everybody out.
I mean, that was discouraging, because we've been working hard to get them to look at it and to give comments, and the one young lady said, I haven't had a chance to change the master plan. I don't think she understands what goes on when we try to work on the master plan, and she, along with everybody else, had the chance to give us input. And we didn't get it, did we?
Nope.
Thank you.
I, I, Whitey, I pointed that out.
I know, I was there.
Okay, alright.
But it's discouraging when, when you know that we at least have attempted to look at this darn thing. And I think the biggest complaint that the one lady had was that I didn't get a hard copy. Well, gee, that's too bad. We printed ours too.
Exactly.
So that was somewhat disappointing regarding our master plan distribution. And to be honest with you, when Artie was done, I didn't know whether they were going to send it out or not.
Any other planning commission member comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Rod, I noticed that when I was reading through the master plan, I couldn't find nothing about an alternate way or subway off the island, other than in an emergency, the Corps of Engineers are going to build us a floating bridge. Now, I, I don't get that. I mean, this is not the Dark Ages anymore, and we, we've got to start looking at a second way off the island. And that wasn't put in the master plan. We originally talked about that back in August. And it didn't make it way, didn't make its way planned. Is there a reason why?
I'll have to double-check. I thought we, the idea was, Eric, do you recall?
Well, we had that, we had some old maps about the, where the launch would be from the mainland to the island, that, that site that was identified as where the bridge could, an older, it was an older plan that I think Matt found that showed the location. So we, we, yeah, when we talked to Artie, we, I, we kind of, he wants to reestablish the Harson's Island Transportation Authority. So a lot of the master plan is written to allow that board to get into the details of what an alternate access would be, but.
I am on the Harson's Island Transportation Authority, and that was one of my problems before we even knew what was going on, before I got on it, that we needed, we needed to concrete an alternate way off the island in case the ferry stops. Davis told us that he's going to quit one day. Who knows what he's going to do? But we need to get in the master plan some way of an alternate way off the island in case of any kind of thing like that would happen. And I truly believe that it should be in the master plan.
We have, I'm just, I know there's specific objectives in there that address that. If necessary, we could show a conceptual location that's subject to further study, if that's something you want to do.
Well, I would just like it, something in there about it, because we've got to do something. I mean, we can't, who knows? We have to have, I mean, you have to have an alternate way off this island. I'm not going to canoe across, and I'm not going to wait for the Corps of Engineers to put up a bridge that's floatable, which I've been on this, I've been on the island long enough. I got caught six weeks off here, and I didn't see the Corps of Engineers put anything over there. And the Coast Guard won't pick us up anymore. So what do I do?
I originally thought, I originally thought when we started with this master plan review, that that was an item that was in there. But I, I can tell you at this point, I haven't gone back through the 90-some pages, but I know we've had a discussion about an alternative way, whether it's a bridge, whether it's another ferry service. It's just, I think we're being broad, general characterization. There is property that's still owned both on the mainland and on the island side for a potential bridge site. So I think we've identified that before, whether it's not included.
Here, I just found it. You, and, and just so for your reference, it's on page 137, under advocacy action items. It's, it specifically says, work with the county to seek federal funds for a feasibility study of a bridge to Harson's Island. So there's a specific action item in there and I think there's, well, when we find more, we'll, we'll email you and reference it.
Perfect.
But it's, but it's in there.
Okay, thank you very much because I looked, well, I got it right now, I will be looking at that.
Okay.
And I think it's referenced in another section too, so we'll, we'll get that to you.
Page 139, page 139, it specifically mentions that HIDA would be one of the organizations to be considered along with, I think, the Planning Commission. I don't remember who was with them. But HIDA is listed in the far right column and the bridge is in the left column because I think I submitted that.
Right, so, so there is something in here, so I think.
Yeah, our thinking was, is, is who, who would we want to take ownership of it? Ownership of the bridge or the alternate, would it be, HIDA would be better suited to do that versus the Planning Commission? So that's kind of why we put it with them.
Okay, any more or any other Planning Commission Members comments?
A couple of questions. I know, I think Eric mentioned that the paperwork for ordinance had been submitted for the updates. Am I to understand that our storage containers were approved by the board as to how we wrote that language?
That's correct.
The shipping containers?
Yep.
Okay, because I'm starting to see them popping up all over the island. There's no, there is no construction going on where these containers are.
No, they're, they're sheds.
And I just wanted to make sure before I talked to somebody that this had actually been approved by, I wanted to make sure it had been approved by the board. And the other question I had was about the information that we see from Artie. I'm assuming this is going to come up for discussion with us as to the short-term rentals.
Yeah, we talked about it a year or two ago and I don't think there was any desire to, to regulate them. So we could, we could refresh the information we've previously presented. It's up, it's up to you really how to handle it.
Pretty much what this document is about.
Yes.
Yeah, it has it, so.
I remember we talked about that because we were, we were also going with the bed and breakfast.
Well, we have a resort on the island now, so that's a totally different topic. Google, Google, go to Google Maps and Google Harson's Island.
We have a number of bed and breakfasts and I know one of them is constantly rented out. And it is my understanding that the $1,200 that they got from, from the feds helped them to go to Airbnb rather than try to drive a car somewhere else.
I know there's one, if you go to Google Maps and in Google Harson's Island and drag your cursor along North Channel, it'll pop up with Harson's Island Getaway Resorts.
Oh, yeah.
It's listed on hotels.com, it's listed on Expedia. Just another topic for inclusion with the Airbnb issues that apparently we're really starting to have in the area. And unfortunately, you know, we're trying to bring people here, so it's kind of a sticky situation as to, you know, people want to.
Double-sided sword.
Yes, exactly.
It's a double-sided sword. And again, has nothing to do with it, but as I was driving past that 50-foot lot to put up a second dwelling, I thought, you were apprehensive when you approved it, but boy, oh boy, it is a bear. At least they're going to move there into the house and that's okay. But what if they sell?
Any other Plan Commission Members comments?
Yeah, I have one, one comment. Rod, Rod.
Sir.
Do we, do we have a trailer ordinance?
Define what you mean by trailer.
A trailer, not a mobile home, a trailer, a pull-around recreational vehicle trailer.
Travel trailer, is that what you're referring to?
Travel trailer, yes, a travel trailer.
In terms of where it can be parked?
Where it can be parked, what it can be used for, because it does have a definition in the ordinance as it's not a livable space and it's not allowed to be lived in.
Correct.
At all. Well.
That's correct.
There's a rec, there's a recreation vehicle section, that's what trailers are under.
Right, okay, I don't have, I, it's, we have 18 trailers and two are hooked up to septic systems that I know of and got pictures of. They're using them as second homes out here and they're living in them on the weekends.
There's a few on South Channel in the front yards too.
Yeah.
That's, that's an enforcement issue.
We're not enforcement, right?
I know we're not enforcement, but I was told by our, one of our city, city people that we don't have a trailer ordinance.
There's a seven-day, just one, one standard is there's a seven consecutive day limit on.
In the spring and in the fall. To ready it in the spring to be used and to close it off in the winter to park it somewhere. We discussed that ad nauseam.
I know we did, but my problem is I have one that I know of that's been here five years. They poured a pad, put a pole up there and connected 110 power to it. And you can't get a permit for that? I know, I just wanted to.
Those are enforcement issues.
An ordinance for this.
Do you have an ordinance?
Yes, we do. Somebody ought to tell some people on the city council that we do have an ordinance and then tell me that we don't, because I know we do.
Well, we definitely know we have one, so we're going back to the enforcement difficulties we do have, so.
You should have asked me.
You're right, Mark, but you weren't there, you weren't the person that told me we didn't have an ordinance.
Well, maybe possibly Mark could relay your concerns when he's at the next board meeting for you, how's that?
I'll, I'll do it prior to the next board meeting.
That would, would work also, so maybe Mark and Harold can talk.
Mark, I'll talk to you after.
If I could ask one more question?
Yep, go ahead.
Do we have anything on our latest rules and regulations or anything on marijuana growth facilities or anything in the township?
We've provided an update in our newsletter of what's changed. And basically it would be up to the township board to identify if they want to change policy in any way. And then, or new ordinances would have to be brought into place. But you now have the ability, thanks to the ruling from the Supreme Court, to do a number of things, including regulate where caregivers are growing. And you can get them out of residential areas now and have them only in non-residential areas, if that's your desire. Or you can allow them in residential areas. And then you can also decide whether you want to opt into medical or recreational. So there's a wide variety of options, it's just you have to take some action to make change to the way you regulate.
Yeah, I think my recollection from, now, this is quite a while, probably a couple of years ago now, was that the township had decided to opt out of the dispensaries. We're allowing the, but we're allowing the grow facilities for.
Medical.
For medical purposes. I don't, I don't know if that still remains correct.
We're, we're allowing just for caregivers to, to grow.
Yeah, so that's just caregivers.
Do they have to, do they have to have anything provided to the township to prove that's what it's for and?
No, you just need a license from the state.
Yeah. That does not fall under any restrictions, right?
Nope.
No.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Any, any other board members comments?
No.
Alright, not hearing any more from board members. I'm going to move on to item number 13, which is public comments, which I'm going to defer to Christine to help me out on that one.
Do we have any?
Mr. Burgess? Mr. Burgess?
That's not my dog.
No, he has a big dog.
That's mine.
He is muted himself and I, I can't, I'm, I'm going to move on to somebody else, Tom S E.
Yeah, it's me, how you doing, Tom Purcell, 7882 Lake Drive. I was the one that sent that package with all that information. And basically it's got something to do with this neighborhood here. And a couple of years ago, I went to a tax tribunal meeting talking about my taxes. I got a condemned houses on each side of me, rentals around me, two vacation rentals across the street. And it's detrimental to my property value, so I go down there and ask them about it. So this is two years ago, so they know there's a problem with these rentals. A year ago, four of us went down and talked to Artie Bryson. And it was just like a general meeting, some from Inglewood, Lake, Stark. We went down and talked to them and we were there probably an hour and a half, just talking about different things. And that first letter you'll see dated January 7th, it actually showed that house 7775. And that was an ongoing thing, so this package is basically just history. And so four of us sat down over a year ago and talked to them about it. And then we showed them that blog about the, the rentals in the area or what, what Michigan is siding with the homeowners. And so this, this package is just kind of a little history showing. So a year ago, we're sitting there and then like in January, so that's like, you know, five, six months later, they said, Artie, what's going on? And then I sent this letter to them, so that one's dated January 7th. So that just says, where are we at, anything going on? And then, then still never heard nothing. And then Dave Mason sends one on 64 and then there was another one on 1, 124. And anyway, so we're, we're thinking it's going for a year now and something's being done. And then the other day, there was that 775 discussion and then they had an open thing. So they talked about, I, I had mentioned about these Airbnbs here. And I go online and there's four of them actively in, three on Inglewood and one on Stark. So I asked them about it and I stayed on the meeting afterwards and listened to everybody talk. And it was like a deer in the headlights, they had no idea what's going on. And, you know, here, we, here, all these residents are thinking, oh yeah, they're working out, we're going to come up with something. You know, I've talked to the guy up in Port Huron where they have 60% rentals up there, they got to handle that situation. I mean, what is the deal, they're just going to let it, let it run wild? Or is it, are the other areas so big that they, they don't notice it? Or, you know, if you're on Cardinal or Blue Bill, you know, they're so big here. But right here, we got a 40-foot lot, I got two boats in my backyard with cameras on them and they got a burn ring that's 40 feet away from my boat, across the canal. You got, at times I got three or four bass boats here, three, four full-size pickups with trailers parked there. You have four guys or eight guys sitting in the backyard playing cornhole, drinking beer. And we pay premium for tax property and R1 is residential, single-family only. Why isn't something being done?
Well, thank you very much for your comments and providing us with this packet. I'm sure we're going to have to have some further discussion because it does seem to be.
I just, can I, and I also copied those, the four of them. And, you know, the one across from me says Inglewood Toys. So they're renting out pontoons and jet skis and they're, I've seen them come on and bring people up, they're showing them how to run a jet ski. And this is an marina. You know, and I got a, you know, I got a nice old Chris Craft back there and I worry about it every day, they're out there. And this is not what R1 is supposed to be about. There's one on Stark, I just looked it up, that's actually a duplex. There's, you know, he, he says he won't use the backyard when, when the company's there. I mean, that is strictly against the rules. The only thing you got on the books that are anywhere remotely close to this is a bed and breakfast. And there's like 53 sections of it on this zoning thing and only one is close, which is the, was it, which is the bed and breakfast. That kind of resembles what we've got here. So, you know, we talked about that and the single-family dwellings, you know, here, Artie agreed we had a problem. And so I'm thinking Artie's working on it. And then, then at that meeting the other day, they threw it on the building inspector and he says, can you help out? So I called him the other day, he called me back, we had a long talk. And, you know, he's very knowledgeable and he says we got to do something, but it's not like you can just let them run wild here. We're paying the premium for this and I can't even use my backyard. I don't even want to go in my backyard because I got a zoo across the street, across the canal from me. Our canal's only 32 feet wide, so I can hear those guys fart over there. It is ridiculous. This is not what R1 is about. And on top of it all, we are a private road and a private canal. A bed, bed and breakfast is prohibited on a private road. If you want to consider these bed and breakfasts or something. So now all the verbiage in here is worded towards helping the, the homeowner, the resident, the taxpayer. And if they want to change it, they're the ones that need the association. They, if they get 51% in a private area like this, then we'd have to go along with it. But I know I can get 80 or 90 people that are, that are against it. You know, there's traffic over there, it's just ridiculous. So, you know, so what all happened was we go to Artie, he said, well, if we're not supposed to go to Artie, then he should have said, oh, you got to go to the zoning board, you got to go to this planning board or something like that. So hell, we're sitting, we're sitting back saying, oh yeah, Artie's working for us, we're getting something done. And then it's been a year and then these guys says, what's going on, you know? I just, I just, it's growing so fast and it's like, it's just running wild. I mean, if that's what you want, I know you want to have this as a destination area, but, you know, let, you know, invite those four bass boaters next to you and let them hang out there, you know? I mean, I'm paying.
I appreciate your comments and it's definitely, no, no, I'm not going to, I'm.
Yeah, we thought we were going the right way, so then now we talked to the building inspector and then he suggested me to talk, talk to here to keep this active, so then they could put it on another thing. So I'm just trying to go down the chain of command or something, you know.
And I don't blame you. And I apologize for any confusion and maybe misdirection intentionally or not, but it is something that does seem to be expanding in our community and does seem to be something that we maybe need to address. But I do see there's some other public that maybe want to make some comments, so please join us anytime you want, but I'm going to move on to somebody else, okay?
Alright.
May I ask a question? No, just a very simple one, did I read in the packet that was sent to us that one of these ads was for 17 people?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was the one on Inglewood, it's got a huge bedroom, five bedrooms or something. And that's the one that rents out jet skis and pontoon boat.
I just wasn't clear, thank you.
Yeah, those are just, this is all just an information package for you to show you that we've been trying to do something. And where do we go? We're just like dumbfounded, you know? I, I can't imagine, other people aren't, maybe they're not on Blue Bill and stuff, but, you know, they're right across from us here and this is just way too small. And I think the verbiage is in place right now where they could call these guys tomorrow and shut them down and let them work backwards the other way, you know? So you, I'm sure you don't want to tell four people, well, you can't use your house the way you want it, but they're not living there. The thing's empty, they're someplace else and they're looking at, they're taking a picture of their backyard showing my nice house. And then if I go to sell mine, I got to show a picture of a bed, Airbnb across from me. That is detrimental to my property value. And since we're private, I mean, I think the verbiage is right there. They should be sending out letters tomorrow and close them down until something's worked out. They need the association, not us, we're in the right.
Well, we hear your comments and we'll see what we can do.
Beating a dead horse, but, you know, we're, we're looking for help.
Okay, I appreciate that, so. Christine, do we have any other public?
Mr. Burgess? They have an MK.
MK?
MK.
That's me.
No, it's not.
MK? iPad area? Okay, I'm going to unmute everybody and see if anybody answers.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Nobody's unmuted. They must have muted themselves, so I'm unable to unmute them.
I, when I click on them, they are.
They probably don't want to say anything.
Right.
And that's fine, that's fine. Um, all right, one last call. If I've not seen anybody unmuting themselves, I would assume the public has passed on the public comments. So I'm going to move on to item number 14, which should be an adjournment of this meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
Support.
Don't need a support.
All right, all in favor?
We always need support.
Opposed. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a pleasure.
I was going to say, Rod, thank you very much, and Eric, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Yes, and wear your mask.
Stay healthy. See you next time.
Have a good evening.